I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Kind of a roll call please. Westwood, Conley, Daniels?
Here.
Keith, President Miller?
Yeah.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stephen?
Here. Um, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as written. I second.
Any discussion or comments on anything that's on there? Roll call please.
Conley?
Yep.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
And I get a motion to approve the minutes of November 12th, 2024.
I move to approve the minutes of our last meeting, November 12th, 2024.
Good job on getting those done.
I second.
Any discussions?
Good job on getting those done.
Any changes or discussions on the minutes? Okay, roll call please.
Conley?
I was absent, so no. That's day.
Okay. Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve warrants payable, please?
I move to approve warrants payable in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
I second.
Any discussion or?
Yeah, just a little bit of explanation. Normally, we don't do warrants payable in the second meeting of the month, but we have some things to pay. So these, they were just four payments. They were all related to the Wilson Brothers' Stormwater Phase Two and Three. So it was almost a million dollars.
Is that over, or we have more?
No, these will be the final payments. Yeah, one is the final work payment, the other one is the repayment after the Public Works Director went through the punch list with them and got everything done. Um, the only, there was just a deadline for us to get reimbursed from the state. They had it like cut off like the first of December, so we needed to get it done.
Approved prior to that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Mayor's business, I did get ahold of Dave and he had no mayoral comments for tonight, so.
He has any comments?
He did not.
Then we'll be done early.
We'll be done. Yeah, all right, all right. So, um.
Oh, that went on the record, didn't it?
Okay, so, uh, public comments on the agenda. I'll open it up for public comments first in the room. You have three minutes. Public comments online. Does anyone have any comments they would like to make on anything that is on the agenda? Please let us know. One minute. Two. Great. Um, action items. We have Urban Renewal Board member appointments. We have two vacancies on the Urban Renewal Board and we had two applicants. So Dave would like to recommend that Carrie Roberts and Mitch Cross both be appointed to the Urban Renewal Board as those two appointees, so.
I move to approve Carrie Roberts and Mitch Cross be approved as members of the Urban Renewal constituency board. I go second.
Need discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Okay. Um, next, we have two businesses that are asking for the City Council to determine an appeal for penalties. Um, so we have to do that in a certain timeframe. And looking at the calendar, the two dates that we don't have conflict in the room are December 12th and December 19th. So we, we can do both of them at the same meeting, so we just need a council to decide what day works for us, where we can have at least four people up, up and present, so.
Do you have to have to be private, like each one private?
If, if it is, um, yes. If it's personal financial information, we would just have one of them leave the room, close the door, deal with that one, and then the other one would, would be present.
Yeah, I have no problem with either date.
I would prefer the 19th is possible.
I thought it was 12th, but it's fine either way.
I don't have any here, it sounds like. I just have to say another 12.
Oh, no worries.
Doug and Chris, are you good with the 19?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Um, so.
What time?
We just need a motion to set that date.
Make a motion?
And time.
And date and time, yes.
Uh, what time do you guys want to do, six o'clock? Five o'clock? Probably six.
Okay, I move to approve December 19th at six o'clock for the date and time for the resort tax appeals.
It's a Thursday, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, next up is to approve the MOU with the Bearcute Humane Alliance, Resolution Number 3672. And I get a motion on that, please.
I think a motion to approve Resolution 3672 approving the MOU with Bearcute Humane Alliance.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, um, we can, um, this came out of Public Health and Safety. Um, and I actually wrote this, so I can make it clear. Um, basically, um, we've had this MOU with Bearcute Humane Alliance in the past. Um, Sandy actually wrote the MOU. Um, it used to be between the Police Department and we didn't really feel that was appropriate. So it's between Bearcute Humane Alliance and the City of Red Lodge. Um, it is for any lost or at-large dog that is captured, um, either by a member of the public or the, or, you know, city staff. Um, after seventy-two hours, um, this gives, if the owner's not found, this gives Bearcute Humane Alliance the ability to take over care of it. So we will have, um, two other MOUs coming forward. Don't know that we'll have them by the end of this year. It'll probably be more after the first of the year where, where the mayor's working on MOUs with, with Fiercely Peak and Bearcute Vets, so that we have a place to board those animals for that first seventy-two hours.
And it could also be an animal that was injured, that they would take to one of the vets, and then the vet would take care of the animal. And after seventy-two hours, if the owner could not be found, then that animal would go to Bearcute Humane.
So, so this is just, um, rather than, you know, people saying, I found the dog, um, you know.
He's running around.
He's running around, um, and dispatch says, you know, we don't, City of Red Lodge doesn't have a stamp. We're trying to, Public Safety is trying to work on solutions, so that doesn't happen anymore. And this is one of those steps. So, that's that.
Any other questions or discussion on it?
No.
Okay. Um, roll call please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Okay. Next up, Resolution 3673. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution 3673, a resolution for the City of Red Lodge to adopt a good neighbor policy for short-term rentals.
I'll second that. Okay. Um, Chris, would you like to talk about this?
Um, so, thanks for introducing that, Sandy, and saying the whole title. This is really short, so I'm just gonna read it, um, in its entirety. So it's three whereas's and a health air for. So whereas the City of Red Lodge recognizes the importance of short-term rentals to the city's economy while also acknowledging the need to protect the quality of life for city residents. And whereas maintaining a positive relationship between short-term rental hosts and their neighbors is crucial to a harmonious community. And whereas Red Lodge Ordinance 963 states that the city shall adopt a written good neighbor policy summarizing local laws and regulations that are pertinent for visitors. Now therefore be resolved that the City, City Council of Red Lodge Montana hereby adopts a good neighbor policy for all short-term rentals within the city limits, outlining expectations and information that is tied to local or state laws for hosts and their guests. We talked about the actual, you guys saw the actual, um, good neighbor policy last meeting, and that will be on the city's website and also be shared with all guests at short-term rentals. And this is something that should have happened last year probably, but it didn't. And so we're just kind of tying up a loose end here. And I'll say nice work on this thing I like that is, is there's links to every one of the ordinances, um, including some state laws. So hopefully this will provide some clarification for folks coming in and making sure that they know the rules, because rules vary from town to town, so.
Any other, um, discussion or questions or comments?
My only other comment is, like where it says mayor, it should say Mayor Dave Westwood. Because when we look back at some of these, it's nice to know which mayor signed it if you couldn't read the signature.
Is that something that you can fix, Ronnie?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Yes. It's just like after the last whereas should be a period, not a semicolon.
After which one?
After the last whereas should be a period.
Should be a period, okay. Good to know. Thank you. That's it. And then, um.
Minor detail.
On the one that's in our packet, it is different than the one that will be put out, because there will be a link to nine oh seven on here, just because there's a question mark. Oh, yeah, so, um, on the actual good neighbor policy, I've handed that over to Danae. And once we get the new nine oh seven ordinance, she will have a link to that. And she's also gonna change that QR code that is on there, so it links to that document online.
Yep, just put it online first.
Yeah.
Kind of late.
Exactly. Chicken and egg, yeah.
Yeah.
So. In her capable hands.
Any other comments, questions?
All three.
Okay. Um, roll call, ladies?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that concludes our action for the night. And now we're on to council business, Public Health and Safety.
Public Health and Safety.
Stop, 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 I'm way over there.
Hi, Judy.
Hi, Judy.
We have some updates from Chief Schrock today, is that they do have, with your Lexipol, two grants that have been written and put in. And one was for a school resource officer and the other was for a separate police officer, because they really need a second police officer to act as detectives when you only have two police officers on a shift and there's all this work that needs to be done in the office and.
Investigative work.
Investigative work. So they did apply, of course, it's gonna be probably months. Um, he also stated that the, um, school board did write a grant for their portion of the school resource officer. So it's nice that, um, they're moving forward, they realize we need it. There's already been some incidents, and he's also, um, trying to get a police officer to go into the schools a couple times a month, perhaps more. We did discuss, um, having the police dog maybe do a, a, a presentation with somebody in one of those suits, and let the dog attack them so that they, they can see the dog at work. So which he says you still end up with bruises.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
The other thing he gave us, which I thought was very interesting, and, but didn't mean as much to me, was a deployment summary, and that is of our canine. And it was for the last year, and there were twenty-one deployments. And he explained that a deployment was getting the dog out of the car. Sometimes all you have to do is get the dog out of the car to make someone cooperative. The dog, there were zero bites, so that's good. Um, but there were some arrests. The dog is really, really good at detecting drugs or finding people. Sometimes if they have a warrant to serve, they can let the dog go in first. So, um, it's been very successful. The county also has a dog, and sometimes Bridger requests either ours or the county's. So it was a very interesting six-page document that I was very curious about, all of the things that were in there, so if anybody wants to see that. Uh, the deployments by month during the last year was, to give you an idea, most of them was only one a month. There's a couple, but the rest were two, there's one, three, and in May there were five. Interesting.
How many have grown?
Out of fourteen. There were fourteen deployments. Well, twenty-one deployments, detection deployments were seven, was fourteen, and patrol deployments were seven, five arrests. So that was a very interesting thing to do. Then we spent quite a bit of time on the animal ordinance, particularly dogs. Talked about, um, making sure that we add some sort of wording on breeding, puppy mills type of thing. There's nothing in there. Also, a section for cat colonies, because we have had cat colonies that are feral and they're not addressed. We're gonna change the name of this to, uh, domestic animal control.
Not just dogs.
Not just dogs. But we're gonna check and see what the MCA is, what other cities have done, so we're not gonna reinvent wording. Um, there was also discussion about changing from dangerous dogs and vicious dogs and what's it, how everybody else has dealt with that, because a dangerous and a vicious dog seems to have like this much difference.
And the state doesn't differentiate it. They only, the judges like us just to use what the Montana code uses.
So we're gonna be really big on that rather than writing our own. And of course, the mayor would like us to, um, not make it thirty-five pages, so. So we'll do our best to get that down. The barking ordinance, by the way, is twenty minutes out of one hour. So the dog is barking, not continuously twenty minutes, but twenty minutes out of one hour.
Wow, really?
Yeah. That's not good.
How is that, how do, how does that get timed?
You know, it's gonna be, your neighbor complains and, and probably the police officer will go over and talk to them.
Yeah. If the dog's barking on the officer's show, that's been.
And that is barking at the officer.
Yeah, and they, they, they'll go to the, um, owner of the dog and just say, we received a complaint about your dog barking subsequently, so.
And it's.
Yeah. They get a warning first anyway, so it's not, you know, just making them aware of the problem, I guess, and.
Well, that was, that was the gist of the morning meeting.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, I'm in in finance. Um, Chris, would you like to?
I would love to. Um, so we're talking about the, um, CPACE stands for Commercial Property Assessment Capital Enhancement. And this is a program that started in, um, 2022, right, Doug? In Montana, it's a financing program that offers businesses an affordable way to install energy-efficient upgrades for renewable energy developments to their buildings. Uh, the program covers projects from solar panels to high-efficiency HVAC systems, and it's available only to businesses, um, like, but that includes farms, ranches, commercial office buildings, nonprofit organizations, and multi-tenant buildings of four units or more. Um, so in a state with few financial incentives for clean energy, this is a great opportunity. Uh, you can see more about it at LastBestCase.org. But Carolyn Jones, the program manager for CPACE, is online, and she is going to give us, um, a ten-minute overview of the program. And I have also sent all of you letters of support from various local businesses, so you can see some of the, the things that people like about the program. And, um, it basically just needs our support via a resolution thing, um, that we wanna support it.
Is this a special program? Special state?
It's a state program. Right.
But the, they have to have an entity approve it. Like it has to be sponsored by the City of Red Lodge or the county. If the county did it, then we wouldn't have to, but the county isn't doing it at this time.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Carolyn, are you online?
I am.
Bye, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, you bet. Um, yeah, I'm just happy to give a quick presentation. Basically, CPACE, um, and thanks for the brief recap, I think that was Chris, um, great job. But yeah, it's basically, it's a finance, CPACE is a innovative financing, uh, program that basically allows property owners to have a way to access different types of financing that helps pay for upfront costs for energy efficiency improvements, or water conservation improvements, or adding renewable energy like solar panels to the properties. Uh, typically, these, uh, types of improvements that are permanently placed on a building have significant upfront costs. Uh, this particular program allows us to make sure that the project is compliant with the statute that the legislature put in place, uh, one of those being that the project has to be cost-effective for the business owner, which basically means that the savings that they're gonna recognize over the useful life of the improvement that they're purchasing and installing, uh, is going to cover the cost of that investment. And then rather than being paid back like on a monthly basis with a principal and interest loan with a commercial lender, it's basically paid back via a special assessment on the property tax. And, um, so we simply, as the statewide administrator, we are, uh, charged with getting local jurisdictions to opt in. So as was mentioned, typically, we try to go for a county jurisdiction if we can, and if counties, um, aren't interested for some reason or another, and cities or, uh, see the opportunity for their businesses in their region, the cities can, uh, opt in for that local jurisdiction. Basically, why, one of the reasons Montana lifted CPACE is that CPACE is a way to help save businesses money. Uh, they say basically one point two billion dollars is spent per year in Montana on utilities for commercial and industrial buildings, and they say thirty percent of that, um, is wasted. So you can imagine what those business owners could do if they had an additional three-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, um, annually in their pocket, rather than just kind of heating the outside air or cooling the outside air on that part. The types of properties that we can do, we can, we can fund new construction, we can fund retrofits of existing buildings, and we can also, uh, do retroactive financing. So if a property owner has made these improvements up to three years back, we can look at that timeframe and those improvements, and help them find the financing as, uh, on that. The types of properties that we can do, as Chris mentioned, commercial, industrial, mixed-use, we can do agriculture, and we are able to do multifamily, being defined as four or more dwelling units. So we are not able to do any sort of single-family residence or any sort of condo-owned residence, and we are not able to do any sort of government or public-owned, uh, buildings. The types of, um, improvements that we typically see financed are, uh, energy efficiency HVAC systems, lighting, uh, being the ballast, not necessarily just the screw-in light bulbs. Uh, we can do the solar panels on the roof. A lot of information on envelopes and, uh, roofing and insulation, just to help the building much more efficient. Elevators are one that I learned a lot about coming into this position. A lot of the old elevators in the existing buildings in Montana pretty much require to be powered twenty-four-seven, so you can imagine a lot of wasted use in the weekends and at nights when those buildings are occupied. Uh, the new elevators that are currently, uh, being purchased and installed basically require the power to be, uh, generated once the button is pushed. But we are also able to do, um, agriculture and irrigation and co-generation, uh, as well as, um, any sort of water conservation, so low-flow water, uh, plumbing fixtures, water reuse is another area that's eligible under the program. Basically, our role as the Montana Facility Finance Authority is the statewide administrator, is we get to work with the counties and the cities to opt into the program. Once that, uh, resolution of intent, public hearing and, uh, final resolution is in place, then basically we just work as an agent on behalf of the local government. Uh, that saves them staff time and resources, not having to work with the borrowers and the lenders, uh, the various parties of the projects as they work through the process, determine if their project is eligible and how to access the funding. And then we receive the district assessment revenue from the county and disperse that to the lenders. So again, trying to limit the staff resources on the local jurisdiction level. Uh, the local government does through, go through the typical adoption process. Again, there's a resolution of intent, which I provided, uh, kind of filled in, it's about ninety-five percent of there. Then the, the local jurisdiction, after they adopt that resolution of intent, if they so desire, would hold a public hearing, uh, at which point in time any questions or issues could be addressed. And based upon that result of that, then if they want to move forward, they would adopt that final resolution. The role of the local government, once that basically is put in place, is again to establish the district and then basically to fill and receive the property tax. Again, the local government is not responsible for working with the lender or serving on any sort of collection agency, uh, for the lender. And the local government has the option to be pretty involved or uninvolved. Some counties really don't care to be involved in the process at all, other than they just want, obviously, the county clerk and recorder to be aware of the documentation when it's time for recording, and the treasurer to be aware of the assessments that have to be put on the tax software. Other counties do like to have either their economic development group or another, uh, group of people, uh, aware of projects as they move through the process. The role of the local government treasurer, obviously, they're the ones that enter that, uh, assessment into the system. So we've worked with both TaxWise, Tyler Technologies, as well as Black Mountain Software, are the two software, uh, companies that serve the counties in Montana. They're trainers and developers who told us that basically he wants to enter the first assessment into the tax software. Takes about two hours. Uh, that's for both sides. One is entering on the accounting side, the system, so that when those payments are made, the CPACE assessments can be remitted to the Montana Facility Finance Authority. And then the second is on the actual tax side to install and input the information for the particular, um, parcel that the assessment is on. These are very similar to rural improvement districts or special improvement districts, like a lighting district or a sidewalk district. However, with CPACE, it is just an individual property parcel, because it's an individual property owner, that's just having these assessments placed on their property. And then basically, benefits to the local government district is it helps provide economic growth, it obviously saves those businesses money without wasting those funds on, uh, energy that's going out the door, helps creates and retains jobs with the contractors that are required through the process, and then it ultimately increases property value and increases revenue. Um, this slide, hopefully you guys are seeing, you're, okay, this is just a representation of, within Hardman County, um, an example of maybe a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project, uh, that's done, and the representation of the additional revenue through the mills that could be generated. The top half of the screen is on annual basis, and then the bottom half is if it were a project that were funded for twenty years. The advantage on these types of, is it is tied to the useful life of the improvement. So these types of improvements tend to be very long-term, so they can be fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. So the term of that assessment and that repayment period for the business owner can be as long as twenty-five, twenty or twenty-five or even longer, um, years, which again just helps spread those payments out over the period of time. Just a couple of examples of projects that we've actually financed in Montana. This is a project in Billings, uh, of a retrofit of, uh, an existing downtown building that was built in nineteen twenty-nine. Uh, the business owner looked at doing some, uh, energy-efficient heat pumps, some LED lighting upgrades, some better windows and skylights that would leak the windows and the heating and the air out a lot less, some low-flow plumbing fixtures, as well as adding solar. Uh, they invested basically a loan of the tune of one point six million dollars. Between the additional energy saving and also revenue that is open to making this investment, uh, basically, they had this building have some non-leasable space. With these improvements, that space is now going to be leasable, so they're gonna recognize over the term of those improvements and savings and revenue of over thirteen million dollars. So you can see very much worth the investment of one point six million, but it's still hard to come up with one point six million when you're working on projects and on your property. Second type of investment that we've done, um, and we've actually getting ready to do the third hotel property owned by the same owner. This particular one is in Butte. They basically are putting solar panels on the hotels that they own, two in Butte and one in Bozeman. And again, the solar panels to finance that is a little under $250,000. They're gonna be able to recognize $370,000 plus in savings over the life of that, those solar panels being utilized to help them save energy. They were also able to recognize some savings through the US Department of Agriculture Rural Development RE program and some tax credits through the Inflationary Reduction Act. Basically, where the program is now is it started in January of 2022. We've got those four projects that we've funded to date. We've got 16 counties and two cities that have approved districts. I continually work with additional local governments to try to get additional districts approved across the state. Currently, we have about 65% of the commercial buildings covered. If I can get the eight governments that I'm currently working out, that'll represent about 74% of the commercial buildings across the state of Montana will be covered and eligible for those property owners to come into CPACE for financing those types of improvements. And then I've got discussions going on with additional projects that are, property owners are interested in moving forward with their projects. And I'm always happy to discuss with anybody that has any sort of questions about the program, and there's my contact information.
Well, good job.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. So I guess I'd like to open up for any questions from any council.
So you said that this could be paid back through an SID, and you can just do an SID on one property?
Yes, it's not considered an SID. It is actually just considered a separate property special assessment. But in the tax system, that's how it's built. It's just similar to an SID, only instead of having a group of properties, it would just be tied to one individual parcel.
And so the city would be the one? The city would be the one that would manage letting the department revenue know that it goes on the bill?
So that's. Yeah, so once the city adopt, if the city's gonna move forward with adopting a district, that role basically comes onto myself and the Montana Facility Finance Authority. So we would have all the documentation as the financing is closed. We would make sure that the recordings are handled properly with the county and that the, we would work with county treasurers to get those assessments put in place on the, in the tax software, the first time each county has a project. So the county, or excuse me, the city would not have to take on that role. We would take that role on ourselves as the administrator. The other advantage right now too is we are working with Robin Root and the Property Assessment Division with the Department of Revenue. And the first time or two that each local jurisdiction puts an assessment on their books in their tax software, her and her team are part of that process as well too, just to make sure everything gets built properly and that there's no hiccups down the road, because we'd rather invest a little bit of time upfront than trying to fix things on the backside.
If that property is sold, say, in five years, and the new owner doesn't want to pay that assessment, they want that paid at closing, who would be the one that would figure out what the balance of that assessment is?
So that is, yeah, that's a part that is completely negotiable between the buyer and seller of the property. And if that's the case, we, as our role as statewide administrator, would take on that role in making sure that we're communicating with the lenders, with the borrowers, with the new potential property owners to make sure that that gets handled properly.
Well, I think the lenders are pretty easy. You can request a loan payoff. I was more concerned that if it's being handled through the city and the taxes, and is there going to be interest on this loan?
Yes, there is interest paid to the, paid to the lender, and that's part of the documentation that we supply to the local government with that, with those payment amounts. It is split into an equal semi-annual payment amount, and we provide the breakout of the principal and the interest. So, yeah, we would be working with, with the borrower, with the lender, with the CPACE and the local government staff to make sure that that payment gets reported properly.
I was just wondering what kind of.
The same amortization schedule, the payment schedule that we provide the copy, we keep on file here at the state within the CPACE program and continually monitor those payments.
So you have an amortization schedule, so that would be an easy thing for payoff?
Correct.
And is the interest rate a variable? Or is, does the interest go to the state or to the lender?
Yeah, there is no state money or federal money in this transaction. It is purely a private sector lender and a private sector property owner. Our role is just making sure that the financing requirements set forth by the legislature are met. But, yeah, so it's kind of a traditional negotiation between the borrower and the lender as far as what the terms are. Typically, again, the length of the loan is tied to the useful life of the improvement, so it's a much longer timeframe. They're paying on their property tax assessment, so twice a year instead of monthly. And then the rate, as far as the interest rate that's being charged, is negotiated between the borrower and the lender, as well as any special provisions, like, you know, any sort of prepayment issues and things like that. And then the interest is, it does go to the lender. So that, that is just a typical amortization schedule with the principal and interest.
And you said there may be prepayment penalties, but that's what we negotiate between the lender and the borrower, correct?
Yes, and that is part of the loan agreements as well as the terms, you know, the interest rates. And again, lenders are able to, traditionally, CPACE financings have been fixed rate. However, we, the Billings project that we did, they, the borrower did ask about the possibility of doing a variable rate. So we worked with the borrower and the lender, and they were able, and checked with Yellowstone County. And Yellowstone County agreed to, working with us, to do a rate reset, but no earlier than every five years. So in the document, in the financing agreement documentation between the lender and the borrower, it was written in there that every five years, the two parties could get together and look at possibly doing a rate reset. And there were certain parameters identified in the financing agreement, like a floor or a ceiling that could be worked out. So that was all identified upfront.
Perfect. Good question. Yeah, so thank you again, Carolyn. We do want to have on our agenda next meeting for action. The only other question someone brought up was, is there any negatives to the program? That you can think of?
Uh, you know, the negatives as far as issues that are brought up when we do presentations, you know, everybody always wants to know what happens in a default, because obviously, no lender will ever tell you they make a bad loan, they make good loans that go bad, but circumstances do happen. Because the process is tied to the property tax payment. If that were to happen, it follows the same process that is currently in place for any sort of property tax defaults on that part as well too. So the other advantage to business owners that are property owners, this, these loans are nonrecourse and non-accelerable. So the nonrecourse typically means the lender is actually underwriting the property, not so much underwriting the business that's in that property currently or the owner. So a lot of commercial loans will require the owner to provide personal guarantees. These are nonrecourse loans, and so again, they're, they're underwriting the property because the assessment stays with the property if it is sold, if that's the agreement. So there's no guarantee required, unless it is a new construction, and there's typically a guarantee required during the period of the construction. And then the non-accelerable piece basically means that if for some reason the property owner does get behind on their property tax, and there's a senior mortgage holder in there, who is actually required to provide lender consent to these types of CPACE assessments that are being placed on the property, they are only basically able to call that payment and not the full loan. So if you've got a $500,000 loan, CPACE financing over 20 years, and you're behind on one year's $50,000 payment, the lender is only able to call that $50,000, not the full $500,000. So that's what the non-accelerable means. So it has some strength to it with it being on the tax, as opposed to a traditional commercial lender.
So if you were to sell the business, the loan would have to be paid off at closing?
If you were, if you first sell the property, and this goes with the property, not necessarily a business, so that kind of depends on if you've got company, organizations leasing. But yeah, stays with the property and it's part of the buy-sell negotiation. So it can stay with the property if that's how the buyer and seller wish it to be. And then the basically, we would just transfer it under the new property owner and work with the county and the local government staff to do that. But if for some reason that they don't want it to stay on the property, then basically, it could be part of the negotiation of the sale price, so that that would be paid off.
So it's not assumable?
It is.
It is.
They'd have to reapply?
No. So we. Yeah, we could just work with the lender and the property owner in those circumstances to make sure that if the assessment is staying on the property, that all of the parties have all of the documentation and the process identified that they need. That, that burden kind of stays with us, and that's basically what they pay me to do for my, my role.
No, I'm just saying that if somebody wants to put solar panels on their commercial building, what's the advantage of going through CPACE or just going to a lender and saying, you know, I want to put solar panels on my business?
So if they go to, if they go to a traditional lender, they're probably gonna do, they're probably gonna obtain what's known as basically a commercial equipment loan. The term of that loan is probably gonna be seven years, maybe 10 years, depending upon the relationship that the lender and the borrower have. That commercial loan is gonna require monthly principal and interest payments. With the CPACE financing, it's because the term of the loan is tied to the useful life. So the useful life of those solar panels is typically 25 to 30, if not closer to 40. So the term of that financing can be spread out over that 25 years, or 27 years, or 30 years, whatever's negotiated, as opposed to having to pay it back in seven or 10 years. So you're able to make a longer period of time and reduce the amount of the payments. And then you're making those payments on your property tax assessment, so twice a year, instead of 12 months every year, which can help a lot with seasonality type, or excuse me, seasonal types of business. Can help with their cash flow management, knowing that they're gonna pay in November and May, and not January through December of every year. So that's a couple of the advantages.
Okay. Good question, Sandy. Any, any other questions for anyone?
We'll have the resolution for action at our next meeting. We have sample resolution, so we'll get those tweaked for a lot, and have it up for action.
Dennis and Artie, our attorney, got back to me saying it looks good. So we shouldn't be.
Legitimate.
Yeah, should be. Sure you make any changes, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Land use and planning, healthy.
Yeah. So land use and planning, we didn't have anything actionable at this point. Mostly, we're just having some pretty high, high up discussions of a couple of topics that will be coming on in the future. So specifically, talking about the airport master plan and not so much the master plan itself. Sorry. Sorry, y'all. I had a little woman in my ear over here. But anyhow, we were talking about the master plan itself, more, more so implementation of having community conversations and more informative conversations versus, you know, forum style, it'd be really more of questions and answers, as well as some information about what's going on with the airport, what's going on with the FAA, what's going on with not getting a grant, what we need to do with the master plan, and really kind of discussing some of the topics that we want to have open to the public and more so just informing the public of what is going on with multiple stakeholders, not just individuals, and really coming from the people that it impacts the most, or have the most education on it. So that's one conversation. There is supposed to be a airport board meeting with the FAA here in the near future. So we plan on having some sort of public event or forum Q and A shortly after. The other thing that we've brought up was RV parking or RV camp sites in city limits, the potential for having that addressed in zoning and the pros and cons, and hoping that planning board, when they're doing the growth policy, is something that they can take into account and really weigh out the benefits versus the negative impacts that it might have. So that was really what we did in land use and planning. Pretty, again, nice, high level conversations, but nothing real actionable at this time.
Thank you. Public work. Um, healthy.
All right. So a couple things where public work is a little bit more actionable. First off, I would like to introduce, are you doing your presentation this evening? Yes, I will introduce Chris on her recycling center presentation.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to this, and you might hear a little voice. Oh, no.
She's gonna talk to you.
Do you want to turn the lights off so you can even see it?
Is there a presentation we can see?
Yep, yeah.
She's putting it on right now.
Are we doing the recycling center?
Yeah, correct.
We skipped over the A part.
We'll do the recycling.
She did, I come back.
Yeah, I was gonna come back to that.
She wanted to do a little sandwich, a little Chelsea sandwich.
Yep.
So I just want to say thank you to everybody for being patient and waiting for this. It was a busy summer, and it's not gonna be that spectacular what I'm about to show you, but hopefully, it'll be worth the wait. So this, this is for the fiscal year, July 1st, 2023, when we took over the recycling center through June 30th of 2024. And I've got it kind of broken down into two parts. One, the first part is the financial part of it. And then the second part was put on there at the mayor's request to talk about what actually happens to the things that come into the recycling center. So we start out, just wanted to give you a brief history. The recycling center was previously run by the nonprofit group Recycle Red Lodge. And they got their funding from individual memberships and business memberships and payments for commodities like metals and cardboard. A lot of the things that we recycle cost money instead of make money. And then the program turned over to the city in June of 2020, sorry, July 1st, 2023. So, and at that time, the city established a $6 monthly fee to all the city households, and that is billed on their water.
Utility.
Yeah, utility bill. So they still allow nonresidents to use the recycling center for a fee. And right now, the staffing is two part-time employees, you guys probably know Kyle and Anne. And then that's supported by a few people from, from Baretooth Industries right next door. And so part of accepting the program to the city was that we would do an annual review by the council. So revenue, we, when we put together, when we were gonna take this over, we created a budget. And we projected revenue of $136,000. We actually got about $22,000 more than that in revenue. We had an increase in memberships of about $5,800. In addition to that, the number of households in the city was higher than estimated, so those fees brought in about $5,700 more. And then we got a $6,300 check, I guess, from Recycle Red Lodge, and that was just like closing out their books. And so we had more revenue than we had anticipated.
How much from recycling? I missed that part. $6,300?
$6,600, yep. And Lonnie, would you be able to put this into the next packet? Okay.
Yeah, we can put it online too.
We can put it online, yeah, that would be great.
Yep.
So everybody can have access to it. So if you just, this is kind of an overview of the revenue. So user fees, like I said, the $6 a month city resident fee, we got about almost $5,700 more than we expected. The, the commercial memberships, we got about $4,800 more than we expected. And then the non-city memberships, about almost $1,000 in that. And then one thing we, that we, that I don't think was tracked very well, when it was Recycle Red Lodge, was the drop fees. And so that's a $10 fee that you can pay every time you come to the recycling center, so that was about $5,400. So a difference of almost $17,000 just in user fees. The materials, ooh, hey, how do I get back? Oh, God. Okay, there we go. So the materials, we didn't get as much in the, from the actual payments of the materials, especially, you know, the scrap metal and aluminum, we expected to get $2,500. We only got $1,300. We got a little bit more in the cardboard and paper. And then everything else, like the glass and the plastic, everything costs more than, we don't get anything in, in the way of a payment. And so, and if you look down at that very bottom number, total revenue, $22,153.
More than.
Over budget.
Yeah.
Yep. And then, so for expenses, the other, this is the other piece of good news, is that our budgeted expenses were actually lower than our, or sorry, budgeted expenses were actually higher than our actual expenses. You know what I'm trying to say?
Yep. Came in under budget.
Yes. So one of the big things was labor, $17,000 less than we had anticipated. And that includes like the benefits, what do you call it, the loaded?
Loaded wage.
Loaded wage.
Sorry, in that labor one, did you include Baretooth Industries in?
Yep, and I'll get to that in the next one, yep. Baretooth Industries is in there. The materials processing and transport was a lot higher than anticipated. And, you know, it's a commodity, and so that always changes, and it's a hard thing to budget, but we didn't do too bad on that. And then the operating expenses were slightly less, utilities. Um, utilities, um, they don't have a ton of expenses, but utilities, plowing, propane for the forklift, bealing wire, um, equipment repair, and then supplies. Um, one big item, line item, that we did not anticipate, and I don't, I think it was, the city had paid it before, but I don't think Recycle Red Lodge did. So it wasn't in their books when we took it over, and that was garbage service asked the recycling center, and that was about three grand. So, we were almost.
Did they deal with that garbage?
It was picked up, but I think the city just paid for it, and the Recycle Red Lodge did not.
So garbage, things that are not recyclable?
Yeah, that go in the.
Yeah, and people, you know, people come, they, they show up with all kinds of crap that is not recyclable, and they have to go somewhere, and I think they try to like send it back home with people, but sometimes, you know, it's like plastic bags.
They're gone.
Yeah.
They're set inside the box.
Yeah. So, um, and then just to take a look at that, this is a, um, kind of a big overview of personnel. Um, seven thousand five hundred dollars less than we expected. The contracted labor on Baretooth Industries, ten thousand dollars less. And part of the reason for that is, um, I think that they were still on COVID protocols, and so they were not working at the recycling center, no?
No, it took longer for the contract. We didn't have a contract.
Okay, and then we didn't have a contract, okay. Thank you for that finding.
No, it was like six months into it before we got a signed contract with them.
Oh, yeah, 'cause we didn't go back and forth with them quite a good.
So that, that will be in next month, I mean, next, this next year's budget. The whole amount of that will be for them, it should be anyway.
Yeah, it'd be expensive, so. Yeah, it'll be more.
And we, we did bump down the number of people. I think we only have two working at a time now.
Yeah, that was one of the, for the negotiation process.
Yeah. Um, so the materials, transport and processing, as I said, that was a, that was a, um, lot more expensive this year. Um, and then the operating expenses were a little bit less than anticipated. And so that's, that almost nine grand, um, less in expenses. And then we can kind of extrapolate here, the personnel, you can see what, um, each person, we have the supervisor, that's Kyle, the gatekeeper, that's, um, Anne, and then the admin. We allocated a little bit of money that, um, the office staff here at the city, um, had to use to, um, just make the program work, you know, sending out things and, um, what, whatnot.
Now, the admin work.
The admin work. It's all the accounting, it's the accounting work, they do all of the books and the.
Yeah, and the billing.
Yeah. And they handle all of the memberships and stuff like that, too, don't you?
Yeah. And then, um, Baretooth Industries, you can see how that broke, broke down. We had budgeted sixteen, almost seventeen thousand, and only spent eighteen-eight. Which we can expect that it will be the full, nearly seventeen next year?
Yes.
Um, and then the materials, transport and processing, and we kind of broke this out by, um, each item that we do. Um, so you can just see how that works, glass is very expensive, um, to the tune of eighty-five hundred dollars more than, uh, what it was the previous year. And e-waste, um, there was no charge for that when Recycle Red Lodge had it, and so I'm not sure why we're paying now, but that's something to look at going forward, and maybe getting Gina and Dan to talk to you guys about that.
How much did we pay for it?
Thirty-one hundred.
I think like in the past, e-waste actually used to be done through a completely different program.
I think maybe that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure why.
Yeah.
And I think e-waste now, I don't know if Republic.
So on, on, so the biggest expense, shipping glass, is that because we have to ship it up far away, or?
Well, it's Republic that we pay to take it up to Missoula. And I'll get to that in a second, too, that's one of my recommendations for next, next year. Um, but yeah, that's part of the reason it's expensive. And they, they charge us.
Mm-hmm.
And then the last thing is just the operating expenses. Um, there's no huge, big-ticket items in here, other than at the very bottom, you can see garbage, was three thousand that we didn't anticipate. But otherwise, things were fairly close. Um, and then that, their port of hiding, Lani and I looked for that forever.
Yeah, you could see that on this year's, which you probably already have, um, because their accounting person just never charged anybody. So we got hit with a whole bunch of those.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. So these are all things to keep an eye on, um, for this year, 'cause this is, you know, our last fiscal year, so, um. And so that's expenses. And so, in summary, this, this past year, we are in good shape. We have year expenses, more, more revenue than anticipated. That should not read income, 'cause it's not really income, but, and so, our six-dollar-a-month rate should be adequate for the current fiscal year, but, um, whoever is on Public Works probably wants to keep a really close eye on that, because it's variable, some of those costs and some of the things that we get in. So, um, another recommendation, uh, Mike Maples suggests that we add a five-thousand-dollar capital budget, um, line item to use for, um, the eventual purchase of a new baler, 'cause we have, I think, three of them over there. So that is something to look at. And then, to address your question, Doug, um, Gina from Recycle Red Lodge said that Republic offers to transport glass at cost. And for some reason, um, that is not happening. So when we renegotiate or, um, deal with Republic, that is something to, to look at, too.
Are there other companies that will do it, or is Republic or?
Glass recycling is extremely difficult in Montana.
It's tough.
Anywhere.
We're one of the few cities that do it, actually.
Anywhere, it's really, it's very expensive. It's heavy, and there are very few people that will actually, you know, turn it over into another product.
But wait, there's more.
But wait.
Good segue, maybe.
So, uh, this next section is, um, the Sustainability Board, I owe them huge thanks for digging into this. Um, they did call every vendor that we use to just make sure that nothing was going into the landfill, and nothing was getting shipped over to China and dumped in the sea. Um, and so everything is staying in North America, um, and sent to mills for processing. So, um, and then when, when they were asked, like, how much, how do we measure the impact of a recycling program? They said that, um, you know, a good metric for success would be based on the amount of goods that we're keeping out of the landfills, and the reuse of natural and secure resources. Um, unfortunately, we don't have that metric for like what the tonnage is in this last year. And I don't know if that is something that's doable. Um, I'm, I'm happy to dig into it, but I really don't know how to measure that on our end, so, um.
Do they charge us by the ton, when they haul it away? They just charge us by the load?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's per, the way our contract works, it's by, um, by how, that's how we get charged. They don't, they don't.
No, I'm not, like, when, if the contracts that we have with the people who are hauling their stuff away, or recycling stuff away.
Oh, I have no idea, so. Yeah, I mean, if you go by tonnage, like, plastic wouldn't weigh much, glass would weigh a ton.
Right.
So it's, it's a really hard thing to measure, in my opinion, and, um.
It would, yeah, exactly.
Well, with the, um, company that's receiving the tonnage, how, they would have a record of how much came in.
My bet is they also use different forms of measure. So instead of by weight, it might be, 'cause again, she just said.
By volume.
By volume. But honestly, that would be a good measure. It's not, it's not anything I have access to, so I couldn't, um, figure that out when I asked my, um, Maples about it. Um, uh, I can, I can forward you his reply.
Yeah, and I'd like to see this earlier than, in two weeks, so that I can, you know, ponder.
Well, we are voting on anything, so.
She said she was gonna send it up with the next packet, but I'd like to get it earlier than that.
So get the presentation.
The presentation, yeah, I can have a copy of it then. I'll just make you a, a viewer.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think so, that when we get our bill, like, from Republic, it should say how many truckloads they took. Like, what was the, I bet we could.
I mean, that may be a good conversation to have with our recycling supervisor, but.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. I mean, I'm not even procrastinating, I'm just saying. For in the future, you know, how can you?
Get to it. You got it tonight.
Get on the book.
Point is, it needs to be measurable, so.
Yeah. It's, it's a hard one to, to get, but I agree. I, I had it in here, 'cause I thought I would be able to get that number, and I had to take it out tonight, 'cause I didn't get it.
It could.
Um, and so I'm gonna go through each, um, each stream, each recycle stream, and just kind of tell you, give you an overview. And again, thanks to, um, the Sustainability Board for digging this up. But, so cardboard and paper goes to Aurora, Colorado, Centennial Recycling. It's a brokerage company, they buy truckloads of all kinds of recyclables. Um, so they send it directly from there to a mill. There's no middleman. They, um, contract with mills all across the country, and, um, so they often have a mixed truckload, so they will ship to a mill that can take, for instance, both cardboard and paper, which is what we send them. Even if it's farther away, one truckload is still cheaper than doing two partials, closer. That makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Um, electronics, that goes to CLS on e-waste solutions and billings. And they are all, they're a middleman, they sort and send materials to the processors, they break it down to raw materials, and sell it to manufacturers. Um, if items can be refurbished, they repair those, repair them, and then, um, sell them. And, uh, they say, Yeltsin e-waste says that measuring the amount of hazardous materials that is kept out of landfills and then reuse of precious minerals, um, and other materials is a good way to measure success of a program, so. Metals goes to specific recycling in Billings, they have, um, forty-six branches, Billings is one of them. So they sort and send it to mills for processing. And just like that cardboard and paper, it goes all throughout the US and Mexico, and nothing is shipped overseas, put in a landfill. And then the glass, that goes to recycle works in Missoula. And, um, we pay Republic to, not only to store it, not only for the containers to store the glass at the recycle center, but also to haul it up to Missoula, and that's, um, where it gets expensive. There were a lot of bills that, we looked over for that. Um, they break up the glass, they haul it to, uh, Salt Lake City, to a place called Momentum Recycling, and then they do all sorts of processing there, and, um, screening, and polarizing, and then more screening. And then the end products are used to make fiberglass, insulation, sandblasting materials, um, and more, and, so they, you can recycle glass endlessly, just like aluminum, so. Why are you laughing? What?
Beer bottle.
Beer bottle. Round beer bottle. She said beer bottle. And finally, plastic, um, everybody's favorite recyclable. Um, so we have somebody that bales, well, the, we bail it here. All of our, um, plastics, we separate it in number two, which is like the plastic milk jugs that you can't see through. And then number one, which are the water bottles that you can see through, um, and then transport it up to Billings to Earth First Aid. They combine it into bigger bales, and, um, they also send most of it to Momentum in Salt Lake City. They shred it and chip it, and then, um, resell it to turn it into different products. So, and just a couple of side notes here about Earth First Aid, they provide, um, curb side collection in Billings. They also have a mobile shredding unit, which you wouldn't want to get in front of that. So, another, another, um, fun fact is that Salt Lake City is a hotbed of recycling right now. And it's nice, 'cause they're close to us.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, that concludes my presentation on recycling.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if, if anybody else wants me to put them on here as a viewer, I'm happy to do that. I think I already shared it with, um, at least the Public Works, but anybody else want it? And again, thanks for your patience in waiting for this, and.
So I guess as a city, we're, we're satisfied that we're doing the right thing by not filling up landfills and it's not costing us money. So we're not in it to make money.
No.
No. No, it is costing us six dollars a month.
Yeah, it's costing money. It's not a free.
Yeah.
It, it's not paying for itself.
No, and it was, and we knew that that wasn't gonna be the case, and, and when we passed.
Garbage doesn't pay for itself either.
Right, exactly. When we passed this last year, our goal was, you know, it was on the condition that we didn't have to increase the rates, um, and that we didn't start taking away recycling streams to the point where we have a private business in town that will do it for free. So those are our two goals of keeping the recycling center open and going. You know, a future council may, you know, change those, but when we passed this, that was, I mean, anybody else?
The objective.
That was the objective of it.
Yep, and then also, I think, part of that objective was to stop filling up landfills, which we can actually, it's a negotiation for, for public services as well.
Yeah, no, I mean, our first objective was obviously that, but. Our guidelines were, you know, when people were saying, you know, it's only gonna go up every year, and then we're not gonna have, all we're gonna recycle is cardboard and aluminum, you know, we didn't want that to happen, so.
Is this available on the, uh, website, so citizens can review it? 'Cause I hear a lot of people complain about it's a waste of money.
Because a lot of people don't recycle, so they hate paying for the recycling.
Well, true, but they, their, their point is, you're not getting any money, it costs money to ship it out.
It costs money to ship out garbage, too.
Right, right, right.
So it's.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Honestly, our recycling is far cheaper than our trash bill.
Yeah. So we will, um, but yes, we can put, um, Kissa's presentation on the website, so people can see it.
I think it should be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lani said she will put it up.
It's good, good info.
And I just shared it with you guys.
Good info.
All right.
I would say it's a success, successful first year.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, y- any time you enter something new like this, you, you do your best you can to estimate it, but I think it was success.
Right, yeah. On a whole, pretty well on budget, and, again, things to learn from, for sure, moving forward, but.
Good.
Yeah. Um, so moving forward with Public Works, the other thing that we do have on here is a discussion on ordinance nine sixty-nine, municipal code six-one-four. Uh, this ordinance is to amend the Red Lodge municipal code. Uh, currently, there is a code that has, um, a way where you can reserve parking spaces in Red Lodge, uh, whether that's on, in public right-of-way specifically. So that was something that we felt was nee, that needed to get addressed. And with that, we do have, uh, ordinance that we'd like to have as an action item next week. This ordinance essentially will limit, um, there will still be reservable spaces available, but only for, uh, accessible parking, as well as for government buildings, things that we feel that folks should have access to, so. And then also to be able to help those who might have, um, accessibility needs, might get easier for them to get into and out of their home. Uh, with that ordinance, there's, um, specifically, there'll be applications that are required by anybody who wants to have that reserved space with specific criteria. Uh, again, it'll be available for government buildings, and there will be certain rules that they need to follow in doing so. So again, hours of operation, or, uh, reserved spaces during a particular time. There is a fee that's just mostly associated with the cost for signage, so, um, all those fees will be put on to the folks reserving space. And also, if that need be, uh, we can revoke signage, and that, that, uh, space from the user is, as the thing needed, if needed, at any point. Sorry, it was a little sloppy, but you get the gist? Um, so this will be available, I believe this is in the packet. Um, there will be a few edits before next week, but on a whole, feel pretty good about that moving forward.
So it'll be public hearing and?
First reading. First reading, next meeting.
Okay. Any, any questions for, for?
Um, I just wanted to clarify one thing, um, on the agenda, it says handicap parking. And it, we actually changed that to accessible.
Yep.
Right, but the way the code is.
But the way it is right now, yeah, so it will change to accessible, yeah.
Oh, it's on the, of our tip.
Yes. So, again, moving forward, we'll get that on the, um, get that up for action, and, again, I think it's important that we do still provide reserved spaces, but just very particular criteria to be allowed to have that. You can't just be anybody.
You can't reserve it in front of your house.
Well, yeah, actually, yeah. If you have, if you have. If you need an accessible.
Yep, if you need it.
Sandy's like, sign me up.
We're on, right? Okay, anything else from?
That is it for Public Works at the moment.
I had a question for him.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna talk to you briefly about this, this test form that got sent back out in the mail, requiring for information. I don't understand it, because we, we, I, I, I'm speaking for myself, as well as. I had to talk to you briefly about this, this test form that got sent back out in the mail, requiring for information, I don't understand it, because it, we, we, I, I, I'm speaking for myself, as well as several other people who brought it to my attention, we filled out this form, and now it's just blatantly coming back, there's no explanation why it's coming back.
So I can provide that explanation right now.
Okay.
Specifically, that is coming back, because what had happened is when they put out those applications, any homes that were built after, was it nineteen eighty-eight? Uh, lead-based pipes, or lead pipes were illegal at that point, so, originally, that was all it asked on your form, the problem is, is now DEQ has changed their criteria and their rules, where they want to actually see the pipe, they don't just trust that the contractor in nineteen eighty-nine did the right thing.
Follow the rules.
Exactly, um, again, discounts are really hard to come by, when you have lead pipes in nineteen eighty-nine, that's probably very cheap. So, so, again, essentially what happened is he has to resubmit this, and have to gain, actually get the information that was originally requested, but, uh, you didn't have to provide that the first time, but that was not because, uh, it was because DEQ was not clear, or not EPA.
Yeah.
One of those agencies.
All right, so my question is-
Yes, sir.
As a user, I, I filled this out, I sent it in, now you're asking me to fill it out again, I'm gonna fill in the same thing.
I think there might be a missing piece. The piece is the connector between your house, where you, where it goes from your house to where it then becomes city, and then the city to the main, so that, they want to know, is this little section versus what is the connector, is the pipe that goes, that, that you understand?
That's what they need to know, yeah, they need to know what comes here, and what connects to your, the water main.
The thingy.
They don't care about your sewer line, it's just your water line, they, they want to know if you have copper pipes in your house.
And that's different than the first?
So-
Yeah, because the first was just the connector.
So, no, no, so, to clarify, DEQ came out with a new stipulation with this, so, the city was required to send out these notices, and there was only twelve hundred this time, not the full amount that, um, we had to send the very first round. Because of that, it's, there was un, there was like forty-some unknowns, but those had to go out right away, um, to hit their deadline, but what they wanted us to do was notify the homeowners of the city's portion that is still questionable and not, that's unknown, so these were notices sent out to everybody, so you can fill those out.
Different than a notice, though. Honestly, I wish that Mike was here to explain it.
Yeah, this is by-
Recheck your house and tell what kind of pipes you have.
So I wonder if that's one of the unknowns, because there was like forty-some, and that's a different one.
No, I got one.
No, I got one.
I got one.
I haven't heard of that. Well, I had, checked it, I didn't read it, but he also explained that, in the event that the, it is one of the homes that isn't unknown, the city portion, it then automatically becomes unknown also, and so they're trying to verify, because they need to know all the city, and in order to do that, they have to verify all these unknowns also.
Can I see yours?
And again, you have till twenty-twenty-seven, and only thirty-five percent of people see those, personally.
Well, the, I guess, because I, I, I crawled underneath the house, and the pipes, I have multiple pipes, uh, on one line, so when they ask, what is it, it's a bunch of things.
I got a beer, I got a hopper's here.
It is, but, but I, but I took like six different pictures, and, and sent it in, so, I mean, I can do the same thing again, but I'm, I'm more concerned about what I tell people that are coming to me, saying, hey, I did this.
What I would say is if someone has already done this, and they feel that, ma, something like that scenario exactly, my bet is that they weren't able to verify from that photo, and so what I would say is to have them speak to the Public Works Department specifically, and say, hey, I filled this out, they could probably pull this up from what they had submitted before, and either identify the issue and help them with it, or I know that when they were first originally doing this process, they were going and crawling under houses for folks. So that would be my first recommendation, if you're getting one of these, it just means that your house is an unknown, they were not able to identify what the pipes were based off the previous application, and that could either mean that, A, someone just marked, I, I, my house was built in the last twenty years, I'm good, or B, the photos weren't easy enough to verify.
So are these different questions than the first time?
I don't know.
No, I think it's, I don't see anything about age of home on here.
If they're the same, then I've already submitted it, why, what, why should I?
What I'm telling you is they can't verify based off what you submit.
Well, I can't do anymore.
And that's why you go to the city, and then he tells you how to do it, or you can't, and go to the store.
So what I would recommend is talk to Mike, and then if anybody has questions and comes to you, just direct them to Mike.
Yeah.
Is what I would suggest, yeah, instead of us trying to explain it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, are some of these being sent out because people didn't do them the first time?
Yeah.
No, well, unless there's some that we never received, but-
He said only thirty-five percent of households did turn that.
Only thirty-five percent?
Only thirty-five percent. And then there was a large portion that they were able to figure out because of permits and engineering.
Yeah.
So, they were able to piece together a lot of information, so.
But the first round, we sent over like twenty-five hundred letters, they weren't six pages long, but there was twenty-five hundred, the, in the original one that we sent out.
So, yeah, I would definitely just, if, if, I mean, I, I received one, too, so I just, I'll go through and we'll redo it, but-
I'm not gonna go look in the mail, no.
I would, um, I would definitely just tell people if they have questions to, um, to contact Mike.
Okay, that might be the easiest solution.
Yeah.
But also talk to him, too, because he might be able to explain it in a way that makes more sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a case-by-case kind of basis, too, because it, it's not the same letter that goes out to every single person, or not the same issue for every single person, essentially, they're trying to resolve the unknown.
Okay.
Any other questions for Public Works?
Okay, all right, um, any correspondence, um, did anybody receive any other correspondence that was not in the packet, that they would like to talk about? Okay, at this point, we will open it up for public comment on any public matter, not on the agenda, we have no one in the audience, so anyone online would like to comment on anything, anybody?
Angie's.
Angie, Angie or Angie's.
Angelo or Angie, okay. Okay, going once, going twice, all right.
Can I, can I create a motion for the?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I could do it this time.
Good job, Tony.
Very good job, Jack, very good job.